Or rejection of an idea. If you just want to pull up the redlined copy. And I would propose we vote on this in the public session unless someone here has an additional concern.
I looked it over this afternoon and I believe all the changes that we discussed are in there.
Yeah. So we took out the word taxpayer. We added, I want to make sure everyone's comfortable with the sentence. We struggled with the character incompetency of a group.
Yes.
And so Roxanne and I put our heads together and came up with that paragraph. It basically says similar, after saying that we won't take public comment on personnel issues or character professional competence or the physical or mental health of an individual, and then similar comments about a group whose members could be identified individually are not allowed. So that would allow discussion of a group that's generic. But as soon as a member or the members of that group could be identified individually, that would be inappropriate. I think that sentence kind of encapsulated what we were trying to say and allow certain things but not allow others. And then the next sentence was, remember how we dropped? We had brought up not just personnel issues but others. And so we just dropped that personal issues and added such comments or statements. So if there's anything that I didn't catch is not included, then I would recommend we pull this. But if everyone's comfortable, then I would say let's vote on it at our public meeting. I appreciate the efforts that you all made and I think this will be a good, good change. These are good changes moving forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think the changes are needed and are good for the running of the meeting. However, will, will whomever is typing this align things and get them as they should be before? If I'm going to vote on it, I want it to be a good copy.
Yeah, this is just a red line for your approval. Thought we'd leave it unformatted just to drive you crazy Marilyn. The P in the mattress for Marilyn would be a mistyped word or an unformatted document. No, no, I love it.
Okay, anything else?
There is an implied, if we approve this and that we are asking for, are you a resident of the district and maybe even asking for their address? We talked at one point about having a digital sign up, which would require us to ask the superintendent or ask the business administrator that in future meetings there be a way to digitally sign up to speak to the board. So I think implied in approving this document is that that request would be made of the superintendent, that if we're going to require that they be a member, a resident of the district, however that, however we ask for that information, there was a nervousness about making that available to anyone who looked at the list. So if I'm wrong on that, let me know, but I believe that by voting to approve this document, we are asking the business administrator to from here on out provide for an electronic sign in sheet. Am I wrong on that?
That is the discussion that I remember having.
Do we need to make a formal direction after we pass this? Yes, I plan on that. I just didn't want that to come as a surprise either to the board or to the business administrator. I like the idea of keeping it private, but I do like, I would like to know, I would like to verify their residency by seeing the address they write down, rather than just a checkbox that they live in the resident, in the district. I think we verify that by asking for them to type a physical address.
I'm going to.
That you could see.
Yes. And if it's apparent of someone in the district.
Right.
They could still comment, but there'd be some sort of verification for that.
Okay. Okay, great. If there is nothing else, we will go ahead and vote on that in our business meeting coming up. Next, we have review of proposed changes to special education LEA policy and procedures manual. And this is the, a new item tonight, first time we've looked at that. And we will welcome Lisa Robinson and Kim Lloyd.
Give her a second to get things set up. President Miller and Superintendent Godfrey and members of the board, thank you for spending a little bit of time with us today, just as a way of introduction. For whenever there are major changes to the state or federal rules related to special education, the state creates or updates the policies and procedures manual. And then they ask that each LEA reviews their individual policy and procedures manual and reflects those changes in the manual and then bring it to the board for approval. This hasn't happened for a number of years, so we haven't had to bring it to you for a while. And so I'm going to turn the time over to Kim. She's outlined two of the major changes that were addressed in these policy and procedure changes. So for your information, we have the slide. We're hoping that the link to the whole manual is working on your slide. And if it's not, Roxanne uploaded it in the board only side with a separate link for you. And we've highlighted those in yellow, so I'll turn the time over to Kim.
Okay, so the, sorry, thank you. The first major change is the rules for identification, location, and evaluation. We were previously a discrepancy only district. That means that we did a formal evaluation. We said there's a discrepancy or a difference between where the student is performing and where the student is capable of based on a cognitive score as well as a academic testing and formal evaluation score. So the state has said that that's no longer allowed. It's kind of sunsetted out and it's gone. And so we are a combination district. So we look at that discrepancy is a piece of it, but it's not the whole. We look at more weight is put on the interventions that are done in the schools and then how the student performs and whether or not specialized instruction would be appropriate. So that's the first major change. That discrepancy is gone and they have to choose either a combination or patterns of strength and weakness. So we are a combination. The second major change is the funding section, which is section 10 of the state rules. And the majority of that is all new. So the, it used to be 21 pages long. It's now 54 pages long. So it goes through multiple pieces of allowable use of funds as well as it talks about each of the funding lines that come from the state and the federal side of things.
Is this because of the amendment that was passed in November?
I, I don't think it is. It's been there, it's been on the board or on their docket for a while. It's because we have some new auditors at the state office and they have just wanted clarification of all of the things that we do for our fiscal monitoring and management side of that. My, my guess of the work with that group.
What does a change entail as far as, does it, does it call for special training? Are there any special things that need to be put into place?
So we've been.
What does that entail?
We've been doing that for a couple of years because it actually sunsetted two years ago. So we've been doing that with our teachers for a couple of years now. Any other questions or concerns for the policies and procedural manual?
And like I said, we highlighted the sections, so if you wanted to review those prior to reviewing them at a general session, if you have any questions, please free, individually to, feel free to call one of us, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is this something we will be voting on in a future business meeting?
The, the state has asked us to have official approval, so we wanted to bring it to a study session for your review and be able to answer any questions about these specific areas that you have. And then we would make sure it was on the agenda for next time.
Okay, great. Ms. George, did you have anything? Okay, great, thank you.
So what is it that we're actually? This is one of those, so the state comes out with new board rules and says you have to implement these board rules. Did they give us any flexibility as to how to implement those board rules?
Not really. We get a template that says here are the, the rules that you need to adopt. There are areas of, that are optional in terms of you can choose this option or this option. And that is the first section that's on there that Kim talked about. So we can either choose a discrepancy mod or a RTI model, or we can choose a combination model. So we were given the choices of which two methods to use for determining students with learning disabilities, but that was really, those are really the major things that we can make decisions about. We can decide whether to adopt the funding or not adopt the funding.
The majority of those are all IDEA. Some of it is.
You've got to give me, I don't have any idea what IDEA is.
Sorry, it's the, it's the Individuals with Disability Education Act, which is what we, special education functions under a federal law. So in that piece, we have obligations to identify, locate, and evaluate students. So there are ways that have been nationally recognized as, as tools or methods of identifying students with disabilities. Combination is one, patterns of strength and weakness is the other one that Utah has chosen. The patterns of strength and weakness requires a lot more in-depth testing from our school sites and a lot more finite intricate types of steps within that. Combination is something that we use as far as the discrepancy piece, which our folks are very used to and know. And then our, our interventions, which goes along with what we're doing with, within our schools, right? We have interventions happening. We use that data as part of identifying students that needed additional assistance.
Okay, so really the only thing that we as a board are approving is which of those two methods we're moving forward with. Everything else, our hands are tied and we're just, is that fair to say?
Funding, yes. It's our assurance that we apply, that we are applying for funds and using them appropriately under state and federal rules.
So what role does our business administrator have in that element of this, of these changes? Are, are you required in your team to have a higher level of review and care over this?
No, they haven't communicated these changes with us. It's, my guess is just gone to the sped directors. Our, how these are spent is really under the care of the special education folks. And then auditors are required by other state rules to rotate the programs that they review, which sped being one of the largest gets reviewed quite frequently. And then they will be matching up against these to see how we can play with them.
Okay, I want you to be very specific with who's the we in that sentence. Is that the special ed department within the Jordan School District? Is that the business, is that the accounting group? Who is responsible for the compliance that this is changing and that the auditors are going to be reviewing?
Well, I would say that's going to be the special education department because they're the ones implementing those charges. The accounting and the finance areas are just processing. But choosing, making selections about what to do and what to spend the money on would be up to the special education.
And then our, our auditors come through and then they have a set that they go through and ensure compliance.
The state gives them things they want them to look for, yeah. So then it's up to the state to tell them, we want you to look for this and this and this. And then that's, they go down that list as they do their testing.
So, again, really the only decision we have to make as a board, the only thing we're really approving is are we comfortable with changing the way that we identify our special ed students? Is that bottom line? That's what we're doing.
That's the major change.
That is, that is correct. So it's only for students with specific learning disabilities that that, that component even attaches to. The other 12 disability categories are, have not changed.
How many categories does this apply to?
One.
What is that?
Specific learning disability on how to identify whether a student has a disability in reading or in math. That's what the combination or patterns of strength and weakness talk about.
How long have we been doing the other method to identify?
So we've been working with a combination, under a combination model for the last two years. The overall discrepancy model has been since I've been a director in for 12 years, so I think for quite a while, the history of.
1993, as far as I remember.
In the Jordan School District? So are we, are we more effectively identifying students than we were? What data do we have? Are we, what, what's the, what's the objective here? Is it to better identify? Is it to raise the bar? Is, what, what has this changed done?
It's to better identify a primary disability for our students. So students will sometimes have multiple classifications under which they may be eligible by fine tuning what we're doing, which is what that combination piece is, is looking at more than just a discrepancy. It's looking at how the student actually performs in their classroom. How are they actually working in their mainstream general education classroom? And, and so that helps us to more specifically identify students for their primary disability classification.
Can you, are more students being identified or fewer classified?
We are. Currently, when we first started, there's a little bit of a, additional students and then it has evened itself out. So there's not an increase any more than we've had an increase in previous years.
That's a helpful explanation, thank you. And are most districts transitioning to this model?
They have, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, appreciate you coming and, and answering questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have updates to administrative policy AA 421, local professional improvement committee. And we will have Dr. Shelley Nordic.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is actually the same policy we looked at two weeks ago in an effort to make sure it was accurate. I wanted to go through it again and had, actually had HR look at it. And they have given a recommendation to make a change based on license, the licensure procedures. And that change is in section 2H, 2, 2CH, I think it is. Section 2CH. And basically it changes the listing of alternative route to licensure, alternative teaching preparations, and just signifies that teachers can receive credit for salary lane change after their, upon completion of their professional licensure program. So it just clarifies that since the wording on many of these licensures have changed. So that's the, that's the change. I also found, we also found one other instant where it talks about salary lane change. And we had the conversation that that should not be in this policy, so that was deleted from that same section.
Great, those changes make sense. Anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, does not look like it.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll see this on a future business meeting for a vote.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up is updates to our capacity report, something that we have been working on for a few meetings now. And Mr. Anderson, do you have anything to say to start out here?
Yeah, just while Mr. Olson gets the computer set up, this is just a check in. As you know, last meeting on the ninth of this month, the board requested, and we settled on a few things. We're here to, tonight to check in with those, give you some examples of what it could look like. And if members of the board agree with where the direction we're heading, then we'll continue that way and make it available to the board as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Before we start, we'd like to ask the board to excuse Mr. Festin, who is returning from a family funeral today. We'll go ahead and get into it. As we discussed last board meeting, we had proposed changing our view of capacity from 23 different measures to three ranges. There were some requested changes from the board that we're returning to report on. The first change is you, was to use six portables as a transition point between the base and the extended capacity. And then there was a request to determine the maximum reasonable portable total for school sites. So the capacity ranges using that request from the board with a six portable threshold would be as shown, the base going from the architectural plan to the architectural plan plus six portables. The extended going from six portables to the greater of six or the current number of portables. And the extreme going from the greater of six or current portables to the reasonable maximum. When we put that in and started to play around with it, we noticed a little bit of a problem with that change. And I'll show you what it is here with the data from Fox Hollow. Fox Hollow has less than three portables or has less than six portables, they have three, and they have no district programs, which means that using that change sets their base capacity from 975 to 1125. Their extended from 1125 to 1125. And their extreme capacity from 1125 to 1350. Because they have less than six, those two endpoints become the same and there is no middle range. So in an attempt to adjust that, we have. It does, but not in the same way that a program such as a special education support classroom would count. The DLI class, as you may be able to see on, on the screen or on the handout, we do have 300 seats marked in that encumbered capacity line to remind us that there are seats in use for the French program there, but they are not seats that are pulled out of the building's capacity in the same way that a support classroom or a preschool program would be. To try and adjust that, we've made one little change and it's in the purple or gray box there on the screen to make the transition point be the lesser of six portables or the current number of portables. What that does is on the next slide, I have Fox Hollow here at the top. You can see we go from 975 to 1050, 1050 to 1125, 1125 to 1350. Now, there is a bit of an issue with that as well, when we have a building that has no portables and no district programs, or very few district programs, like Aspen, our newest school, the base capacity now doesn't have a range, it's just a single point. But we felt like if any of these were to be just a single point, the base is the one that makes the most sense. So that seems to us to be a change that was, met the board's request, but also was, made a little bit more sense when the numbers came into play. The second question that we had was to determine the reasonable maximum number of portables. I have here a picture of Majestic and we discussed this a little bit. We were able to meet with Scott Thomas and Dave Rostrum, who I'm sure are just here to support me. I don't think there's any other, other reason they're here. I appreciate that. To talk about what the reasonable maximum would be. In our discussion, we keyed in on the term reasonable, which I believe Vice President Dunford mentioned. We very well could take a school site like this and just figure out how many rectangular boxes can fit on the property. I believe for Majestic, the total I came up with was 37 or 38. We could give you that as a reasonable maximum. Dave Rostrum mentioned that when we build new schools, we tend to, at the moment, build and wire them for six portables. So in our discussion of what reasonable maximum would be, we, we went back and forth a bit and what we settled on was the clearest way to discuss that or to communicate that was to say the reasonable maximum for a school at any level was 10. Now, we do have schools that have more than 10. Those schools that have more than 10, I would suggest are an indication that there, there may be a situation that needs to be examined, or it's the result of a programming decision. For instance, Foothills has 11 portables. They have a DLI program that uses 12 classrooms. So if the DLI program were to move, many of those portables would no longer be necessary. Similarly, we have schools that can accommodate more. I had the privilege of working at Sunset Ridge as an assistant principal in the year that we had 13 portables and 1,700 kids. 13 portables was not reasonable. It was a lot. It reminded me, thinking about it recently, of some of the old cartoons where you have the person in front of the crumbling dam plugging holes with their fingers and toes and trying to keep things going. As Mr. Thomas mentioned, as we met with him, and why I picked Majestic as this image, 10 portables is like putting Majestic Elementary behind a school, but without increasing the size of the gym or the library or the hallways or the cafeteria or the parking lot or the lockers or anything else. So 10 felt to us to be an easy total for all levels, which is what we have included in the three examples that were provided to the board. We can also go through those examples here on the screen or look at any other schools the board would like to look at. We can also go through those examples here on the screen, or look at any other schools the board would like to look at.
Now, we've lost part of our definition. Did you do that on purpose? Because in the past, extended, well, extreme meant that the stage was being used, that hardwired computer labs were being used, collaboration areas were being used, pods were being used. And we're no longer counting that as extreme capacity.
Those spaces are on the extreme capacity. They should be listed right down here as the varying changes, or the totals there, and what spaces they correspond to. The extreme is, should be the same as what has been discussed previously with the board. The only major difference is, is in the reasonable maximum number, the changing to 10 portables. The way the spreadsheet is set up is if the site has more than 10 portables, that's being used as the maximum number instead of the 10. But those same spaces should be reflected on all three of the levels as spaces being converted at that extreme total. The, the term that we keyed in on from the board's last discussion was reasonable maximum. And we think that 10 is the reasonable maximum, understanding that we could put more at a school site if conditions warranted it, or if there was just no other option. Auxiliary services is, is very resourceful. They could, they could pave quite a number of places. But 10, we felt was the reasonable maximum. And also an easy, an easy number to keep in mind, because then we wouldn't have a situation where buildings of the same layout may have different reasonable maximums because they have different amounts of blacktop. We also discussed with the board that Mr. Festin and I will be starting an annual review process of building capacities and walking through those buildings. That is reflected on the dashboard, or on this document with a number right there showing the date of the last capacity check. Quite a number of the schools will just say MOAB, because we haven't had the chance to get back to them yet. But that number is, is on all of the levels to show when we last examined that building. It's the very bottom of the information section at the top. We also had a request from Vice President Dunford to reflect on this document, changes to school sites that resulted in an increase in capacity. In talking, again with auxiliary services, the only one that we're aware of was Montevista and their recent addition of classroom spaces. We have done remodels that have impacted capacity, most notably our, our middle schools that had secure entrances that, that changed the location of the offices and what have you. We will reflect those changes on this document as we walk through. You'll see comments in the notes section that we've added here at the bottom. But for Montevista in particular, up at the top as requested, we have indicated here that it is a Capital Reef plan with a six-room addition. The final version that is presented or delivered to the board will have individual tabs for each school rather than changing them on demand, because that's more convenient. But we just have not done that at this stage.
This is great work, thank you. Does this, is this helpful to board members and answer their concerns? Or is there any other changes you'd like to see made?
Yeah, that, again, would be a reflection of the gray line, the encumbered capacity. And this probably comes into play more often at our high schools, where you may have a class that is in a room that on paper could hold 27 students. But if it is, say, an advanced ceramics class, it may have 10 or 12. Or an advanced theater class could have a much smaller number of students as well. So that's part of the process Mr. Festin and I would like to do as we walk through, is try to present figures to the board that are a little more reflective of the current scenario, and not just how many desks could we fit inside these walls if we really, really had to. So from a numbers perspective, you're right, almost every school looks like it has more space. But it's the programming decisions inside the walls that could influence how many students are actually able to be accommodated. It would be tricky. That's why in the encumbered capacity line for the middle schools and high schools, we just have asterisks, because it would be an awful lot of hairy math that Mr. Larson might enjoy, but the rest of us would not. And it would also potentially change from one semester to the next. That, that's a total that's going to shift quite a bit. So we're hoping that as we do an annual walkthrough, we can provide as much of that information as we can, but also make sure the board is aware that programming decisions at our secondary schools have an impact on capacity that we, we can't really measure easily.
And I appreciate you just coming here so much. Just being able to say, never know, we have more teachers at this school. I mean, give you a good view of what's really happening at this school. Would that be, other than, do you have any?
No, we could ask that question to, to schools and ask them to, uh, report that information in relatively easily, if that's what the superintendent would like to do.
I mean, doesn't that number, doesn't that change on a quarterly basis, almost?
And if you're looking for a yes, no, is it one teacher, is it five, is it 20? I mean, are you concerned if one teacher roams, or if five teachers roam? Would it, I mean, if a teacher chooses to roam, I, I just think there's so many gray areas there that- Class assignments change.
One other issue with roaming teachers that, that came up after the last board meeting as we were discussing is we have a fairly common situation at a lot of our secondary schools where a PE teacher may teach a single health class, and that teacher then technically is a roaming teacher, because they're teaching a class probably on someone's prep period in a room that isn't their primary assignment. So there would be a little bit of, of splitting hairs in that to, to get a clear example. But there could be changes on a quarterly basis or on a semester basis as, as staffing assignments and positions change. We, we have teachers who resign unexpectedly from time to time, that, that impacts the makeup of a board.
And just because there is a roaming teacher doesn't mean there has to be a roaming teacher. And I would say that's always up to the principal, because these are programming decisions made by the principal.
I'm not aware of a principal that's requested a portable and not been able to receive it. If there's a porta, if there's a principal who wants a portable, it's tough to say that. I would say they just need to contact their administrator of schools. We talk about that in cabinet on a regular basis. And the, the thing I was going to say about a traveling teacher is we just have to define exactly what we mean by that. A halftime teacher may not have a classroom to themselves and may consider themselves a traveling teacher because they share a classroom, or I just, it may not be a clear-cut definition, which I know we need to have on a document like this. But if anyone's aware of a principal that needs a portable, let us know. We've been able to accommodate all the requests I'm aware of.
I mean, we as a district haven't purchased or built a, a new portable for years and years.
Probably 10 years. I've made it my personal quest to move those around. Scott always teases me, but we've moved them around for about a decade. Scott, would you say that's about accurate? So we, we move them where we need them, and, but we don't move them until we need them. So there are some portables in places that aren't absolutely needed. They're always used.
They're always filled.
They're always filled. You'll always fill the space you have. My, you know, home is no exception to that. You fill whatever space you have, whatever room you've got. And so, but we, every year, once 2.0 comes out, once enrollment projections come out, then we look at where we may need to move those. Mr. Thomas and his crew have done a great job of being first in line with the few companies that do move portables over the summer to be sure we have things in place. And so we leave portables until we need them, but we don't hesitate to move them when we do. And it's been 10 years since we built any, so. And I'm not aware of an unfulfilled need, so I would encourage anyone with a need to shoot an email to their AOS. Taken care of.
Any other suggestions for this capacity report?
I have a question, but I don't know that we resolved Nikki's request. I don't need that information personally.
I think it's so difficult. I just think it's such a difficult number to identify, and without an exact description of what we consider that, I just, that would be, I'm not interested because I don't see the ability for us to really pinpoint what that means.
Okay, any other board members interested in having that? Okay. Did you have another one?
So go to Copper Hills. Here's the fuzziness that I just, I want to make sure I understand and other board members understand. Under the definition of extended, we would recoup any rooms used by district programs. So technically, under extended, the daycare should be zero, and those desks should be converted into capacity. But Copper Hills is in extended because of the number of portables they have, not because we need to use the daycare. So the challenge that we have is Copper Hills is in yellow because of the number of portables, but we're not going to give up the 27 spots for the daycare. However, if Copper Hills were to need, those 27 spots for the daycare could be used to increase capacity. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, and the daycare seats are shown in the extreme capacity as a, as a plus 27 down at the bottom. But remember that at the high schools, the daycare that we're talking about is the-
Student daycare.
The child development class that's being taught, not a preschool program. So that's why that, those seats are not reflected in the district program line, because it's being considered a school program.
Yeah, and I couldn't find one that I could point to. I was just, my best. But that's the challenge that we're going to face, is just because a school is in yellow doesn't mean they meet every requirement of extended. So part of the conversation's going to be, well, could extended grow versus jumping into extreme? I just wanted to point out that no matter what we do, there's going to be fuzziness in this, because for one reason, they're out of base and into extended, but not necessarily for every reason.
Exactly, and that's one of the reasons why we added a notes field at the bottom. We would like to be able to include some additional clarification to the board there. That will come into effect over the next year as we visit schools and, and fine-tune some of the, the details that the board may be interested in knowing.
But I'm very comfortable with defining the base as you've suggested.
And I like the notes there. I think that's a good idea.
This does it for me.
Okay, everyone else, good with this the way it is?
I think it's tremendous. I think it would be helpful if we as a board could begin to utilize this and create a vocabulary that, that we can begin to familiarize our community with over the next year or so, so that we can begin communicating the true state of our, of our schools. And so I think that's the, I don't think we're done with this. I think we're done with the mechanics. I think we're done with what, with what our staff can do. I think now we as a board need to begin talking about how do we incorporate this into our conversations, into our, into our, like I said, vocabulary, so that we can begin to craft an appropriate message that we can succinctly and accurately communicate to our community what our housing needs truly are. Now, you need to populate this for all schools, correct?
The data is-
If an approval here, you would now go back and populate this document for all schools. And then, once we have access to that, then we need to start doing what Mr. Young requests.
Exactly. The capacity workbook that the board already has will be overwritten with this within the next week, if the board is-
So if we approve it tonight, you could be done in a week.
And is that available to the public?
I don't believe it has been made available to the public.
And this is a Google document that is a living, flowing, changeable. It's not a, here's a PDF, put it in your files, send it out to the public. It's a, that's a question to be answered in a future day. How do we make the public, give access to, the public to a Google Doc? Because I love the idea that it's updated on the fly.
For instance, you'll see, well, you won't see because you don't have access to it yet, but the current enrollment box there in the top will be updated tomorrow morning when we run December 1st enrollment.
I love that.
It's tied directly to that.
On the feeders, the elementary school did not have the middle school listed. And I wonder if it also would be what the school feeds to and what schools feed to it. That might be a good reference point. So, so you have which middle, on the high school, for example, you would have which middle schools, you know, one level down, go to it. So it's all on one page. At a middle school, which elementary schools feed to it? Just as you're going through and doing it, so it's all in one quick reference. So you could compare, for example, you know, the various feeders.
That would be in addition to this information section at the top of each school's page.
So feeds to and fed from.
How do, how do board members feel about that?
To what end? What does that? How does that help us in decision-making that we're utilizing this for?
How does that help us in decision-making that we're utilizing this for?
I don't know that I can answer that question for you, but I can tell you it's a data point that's not always easy to locate, and it would not be a, a significant amount of extra effort to have that information available to the board here, just as a reference or, with the caveat that some of our schools split boundaries between different middle's, high schools and et cetera.
It would be a list. Yeah, it would be, in some, it would be quite a list.
I mean, from my perspective, feeder provides me enough location, enough information about generally what schools are coming into this, this specific school. That I, I don't know if I need that level of detail. I can't think of a decision point that I would be utilizing this for, that, that information would be helpful to me.
And I'm comfortable with just which feeder system it's in.
I see that being comfortable if we're actually making a boundary change and boundary option A has, you know, an elementary going to three different middle schools, but boundary option B has them all going to one middle school. At that point, that would be very helpful information. Um, but I don't know if listing it on here would be helpful or if, but if we were doing a boundary change option, that would be helpful to know.
We would certainly include that in the boundary change descriptions and the different options as we have in the past.
We can add that without much disruption to the, the layout of the document. We can leave the feeder line as is and just add additional information. That would not be terribly difficult. Uh, the board also had talked about having summary tabs for levels or feeder systems, which we can start to put in place. If this is the direction we want, we just have not gone down that road yet until we knew what the, the basic outline was.
This does it for me. This provides the information I'm looking for. And the only thing I would ask in the summary report is this current use capacity color, the two of them, current enrollment and current use capacity colors.
Can I say that again?
This is, this is the information I would ask in a summary report. I want to know how many schools are in yellow, how many are in green, and how many are in, are in red.
And by summary report, you mean kind of the one page, here's all the schools?
Yep.
Yeah.
Would you want that on like, we could, we put that at the beginning of like, front tab or something like that?
It's this one that we got in the original.
Okay, you just want it on that?
Yep.
Well, I will make a version of that, that, these tabs with these ranges, excuse me.
When this gets updated, will you send us all the link?
But I, I do think once that's been updated, this needs to come onto agenda pretty quick so that we can start the next phase of, of utilizing this. And, and that's coming to an understanding as a board as to what this information is telling us. Um, and then how we begin utilizing this as a communication tool with our patrons and, and us so that we can all get on the same page. So I think this needs to come back.
A quiz.
I mean, it, it would be fascinating for us to digest all of this, come back, have a conversation about, okay, what is, what are, what takeaways are each of us coming away from after we've studied the data? Okay, we come to an understanding. Okay, now let's take it to a couple of our school community councils and say, okay, Copper Hills Community Council, this is the data that we're utilizing to assess whether your school is, is at a pressure point or not. And then to hear from, I, I think, I think there's still a lot of work for us to do with this document over the next little bit.
I will note that as a future agenda item. Thank you. All right, thank you. Very nice work. Appreciate this.
Thank you.
And looking forward to seeing it and studying it and utilizing it. Next up, we have twenty-twenty-two Summer Projects Cost Update. As a board, we selected our projects for next summer in August based on some very preliminary estimates. And now that, um, the architects have, have met and have been working on this, we have more updated estimates in order to look at. So now this is our time as a board to determine if we want to send projects out to bid or not. So, Mr. Dunford, we'll start with you.
So you, earlier you were emailed the updated form, and it's also on Board Docs if you need to pull it up there. I would ask that you refer to these projects by their letter code, um, simply because we haven't taken them out to bid, and in this environment, anything we can do to keep costs downs, we need to do. So I broke these into, we basically said, hey, here A through I were the ones that we said, those are the ones that were approved, but then J was the last one on the list, and we decided that given the fact that it really doesn't cost us much to take it this far, we included item J up till now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let these gentlemen answer any questions you have about the increase. Okay, I know some of you are going to have some questions about the increase. Again, please refer to these projects by their letter code, and then say, for example, I'm really curious why letter E increased so much, or why letter D increased so much. And while you refer to, while you get your questions answered, I'm going to write A through J on the board. The end result of our discussion today needs to be, which projects do we now take out to bid? Um, you can see the increased costs just from the time we started till, till today, and there is no question that when they come back from bid, they'll probably hi- be higher than this. Um, just because of the environment in which you were, we are. And so while you get your questions a- answered, um, I'm going to put them here. And then at some point, President Miller, I would just encourage everyone just votes for the projects that they want to move forward, and any project that gets four votes is moved forward.
And then, just as a reminder, our, our budget that we were shooting for, or the recommended budget from the Finance Committee back in August was fifteen million. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So these gentlemen are ready to answer any questions you may have, but at some point, I think we just need to say, I approve A, you know, whichever ones, and then if you'll just mark them. And then we'll, I say, let's go that far, and then every project that gets four or more votes, let's tally up the total and say, this is what was approved. Are you comfortable or not comfortable, or do we want to revote? Um, the end result needs to be, we're taking these projects out to bid. So while you do that, I'm going to mark A through J.
Anyone want to start with questions?
I do have a question on H. Um, do I, if I'm remembering correctly, this was a safety issue. Am I correct?
Yeah, there's, there was an incident where one of the mowers rolled when they were trying to cut the grass, uh, on that hill. It's, uh, it's been isolated, you know, that's been in place for many years. Um, it is fairly steep. Uh, the appearance isn't, isn't the greatest. That's one that we, we've been trying to get a better cost estimate on and have been struggling with it. Got a little bit of a concern that that may even be a little bit low. The architects have been working with the engineers to, to try to come up with a, what would be the most reasonable solution for that. Uh, there has been suggestions of, you know, just not mowing that hill and just letting that go more to a native and letting the grass grow and, and not even, not even mow it. Yeah, and we've, we've had, we have some other areas that we've, we've done that in.
And how does that look? Can you tell me the age of the schools A and B?
I think Bluffdale was ninety-five. B was ninety-nine.
A, yes. And B was ninety-nine.
And Project C, we've done a few times. It looks like that cost has gone up quite a bit.
It, it has, yeah.
And just, I mean, it's the same project that we've done at other schools. It's just that construction costs are now that much higher. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Cornberg would like to, we've, we've typically put one seat around the perimeter of it. He has requested that we put a two-tiered seat, would, which would increase it just a little bit, but, uh, but yeah, it's just been the, some of the other ones that we've done have been combined with larger projects, and typically that's the case, you'll get a better price because contractors on site already.
Now, I'm going to speak of one project by name because I won't use any amounts or anything, and then I won't use the letter, so no one will know which letter it is. But I think we need to identify this project. Um, Bingham High School next phase is basically the media center and the front offices. In, in doing that, we were going to use, uh, that media center is huge. It's larger than, uh, Mountain Ridge's media center. So we were going to use a portion of the media center for, um, counselor offices. And in planning for that, we are all kind of realizing, why don't we go up? It's just going to be empty air above it. Why don't we go up and then give access to it from above? If we go up, we can add more office space and give Bingham High School their own version of a tech atrium. They would have a tech atrium-like place, gathering place, if we went up. And because we're going up, the cost isn't an enormous increase because it's the same base. You're just going up. And so the increase on that project includes our desire to add to and go up above the counseling offices.
I have, I have, uh, talked about this project because it's a big chunk. Um, and, you know, we're trying to keep fifteen million or under. Um, I, I was just looking at a possibility that maybe we divide that project in half and do the media center and the, um, counseling center offices and that second story that you suggested or whomever suggested as the next phase. Then do the offices and the surrounding classrooms as the phase after that. Yes, I know that prices are just going to escalate, but that would, that would bring down our summer project amount so that perhaps we could do other projects or help with some of our other issues.
So I'm going to add that as item K. Don't vote for the current item and vote for item K, which would be a scaled-down version of that project.
And, and I'm trying to think through this whole thing because I know that the offices need to be done. I, I know that. But the transition to move the counseling center then to the new offices and then start that next phase, they could actually start in the area where the counseling center was and get going on it sooner, I would assume. That's, that's just my thought.
That's correct. Yeah, there could be so much of the demo work be done in that area.
Okay, I, that would be my reasoning on that.
So Marilyn's proposal is vote for item K, which is a modified Bingham High School renovation.
Not- Which is simply deferring the costs to even further where they're going to be even higher.
Yes.
And money's going to be even tighter.
We haven't broke that out, but, uh-
Let's see if it gets votes. If it doesn't get votes, then it's not worth our time to break out. If people are interested, we'll-
It'd be-
You're voting to pursue it, not necessarily you're voting for the cost, I think. At this point, we can't provide that information.
My, my biggest argument for that is the fact that other areas of the district are not perhaps getting some of the things that they need because of this big chunk that we're um, putting into Bingham each year, and perhaps this would give a little bit of a, a, a boost somewhere else. That's just my reasoning.
So anyone who wants to pursue that, don't vote for Bingham's current and vote for item K, and then we can come back before we go out to bids with a breakdown of what that could look like. But if the board isn't interested in pursuing that, if, if enough people vote for Bingham's current item, then I would recommend we not break that out.
The AV upgrade?
Item B? How does item B compare with the sound upgrades in the classrooms?
It could be addressed in, in either way. It could be addressed in, in this upgrade, uh, which was our plan when we have the ceilings taken down. Or it could be postponed, either way, and, and part of a larger district-wide project.
So whatever portion of that overlaps with other projects, compatibility is one of the things being looked at, so it's just a compatibility question.
It would. It would reduce, uh, it would reduce some of the AV costs of the project. Yeah, the, the lighting and the, the ceiling coming down, it, it almost makes sense to do it as part of the lighting upgrade while we're in there, and the wires are tore out because that AV, uh, upgrade's going to require running wires, you know, from the projector down to the, to the teacher's desk. And we usually do it in two locations in the room, so it, it really makes sense to do it as part of the lighting upgrade.
Is there an AV upgrade as part of A also?
Yeah, I was going to say, any, any, any upgrades that include a classroom and the project that we've already talked about, funding could be used from Esser money to cover that portion of the project. That's a good catch.
And AV would be included in A.
So if your questions are answered, go ahead and vote for-
I just want to clarify one thing. Dave, could you and your team do all projects A through I?
Absolutely.
There's no worry that that is stretching you too thin?
Not as far as on our end. There's always a concern with materials, material, uh, shortages and lead time on materials is our biggest concern, but as far as managing the projects, we have the staff to manage the projects.
And if Bingham High School is approved, um, they're not concerned. There, it wouldn't cause a delay in school. There's only three classrooms that would have to be done by school start. The, um, the front offices could be easily housed in any location of the school.
And if we go over our fifteen million budget, that is just dipping into capital reserves.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Mm-hmm. She texted them to me.
Take a minute. Okay. We're gonna do a total. We're gonna check up all the ones that have four board members and then check the total. And then if anyone wants to change their vote at that point, they could. He's ready. Bryce Dunford Memorial Whiteboard and the John Larson Memorial spreadsheet.
Tastes great together.
You've got your peanut butter and my chocolate. No, I was just commenting.
We are the same age, aren't we, Bryce?
Right. Two months. No. I'm April, you're June? Yeah.
Of course, I can't add mine up because I don't know what that one would come in as.
Well, you can at least deduct. I would, I would probably split it in half as a starting point. Jim, Matt, Jen, whenever you're ready. Have some Jeopardy music playing. I'm gonna tell dad jokes if we just sit here in silence. What did one poem say to the other poem? Haven't we metaphor?
Any word on Bingham Phase Three, when those auditorium chairs are finally going to be here?
They've received a partial, actually gonna start, uh, installing the bases or the brackets on the floor, uh, next week, so...
Great.
But, uh...
Been timed for candlelight, though.
No.
Shouldn't be able to turn that over to them on before the thirteenth.
Great. A lot of work for that administration to find locations for all their December performances.
Okay, so a majority of six is still four, right? Paul? A majority of six is still four. So, Mr. Young, or Mr. Larson, A, C, D, E, F, G. Tally that total. A, C, D, E, F, G.
Want the total dollar estimate?
Yes, with the updated projections.
Yeah, thirteen point nine.
Does that change anyone's votes? Do you wanna add a vote, take a vote away? As of right now, those are the only projects with board support to move forward to bids. That's well under our budget. It would require a Tracy, a Marilyn, or a Jen to vote for item B. It would require, uh, Bryce, Matt, Nikki to vote for item I.
And is Mr. Robinson just not able to contribute?
That is correct.
He's on the road.
Uh, how do you think he'd feel having an opportunity to advocate for...
For B?
For a school and hit it, yeah.
I mean, that is a concern. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, is this board open to allowing him to have that chance or...
I, I, I asked him about this. He hadn't seen the list yet because we didn't get the list till this morning. Um, but I asked him about it a couple of days ago and he said he does not have any particular strong preferences on any of the summer projects.
May I speak to I?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to advocate, advocate for I in light of, uh, the construction that is ongoing and will be ongoing, uh, with that Bangater issue. Um, the parking is still a problem with all of the construction going on behind it, behind the school. Um, and so I, I really feel strongly about this, uh, this project going forward.
Um, I appreciate your suggestion, um, on Mr. Robinson. If the board would be okay, I would like to, um, table this. I'll reach out to him and see if I can hear back within the next couple of hours. And we can just briefly address this again after our business meeting.
So not table it?
I mean, I think we've all made our decisions. I, I just, if he has the opportunity, I, that, that's what I would...
Yeah.
I don't think we need to...
So he needs to understand that if he votes for item B, it would increase the total dollar amount. If he doesn't vote for item B, that's the dollar amount that we would be looking at. So that's the, that's the choice he's...
Or he can vote for I and...
That's true. We would need one more vote for either B or I. Okay. So Mr. Larson, add item I.
I give you a new total, we will have revealed the cost of I.
That's true. So I'm gonna say...
I think we all know whatever it is.
Everyone knows the cost of item I. This is that total plus I plus...
And we can all figure that out.
So the new total is thirteen point nine plus item I. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And then we'll briefly revisit this right after...
Is it safe to assume, though, that items A, C, D, E, F, G, and I are approved to go out to bid?
Yes.
The only question is, do we add item B?
Yes.
So let the record show for all board members and all staff that items A, C, D, E, F, G, and I are going out to bid. President Miller will inform us later on in the meeting if item B also goes out to bid.
And then I just wanna clarify for the public, too. This is an approval to send something out to bid. It is not an approval that the project will get done. That doesn't come until we actually approve the bid. Which will be in the spring sometime, early spring.
Correct. We're hoping to bring it to the board in the February board meeting, all of these projects.
Or winter. Okay.
One suggestion would be is you could take a project and, and have that as an alternate as well. Uh, just because we put it out to bid doesn't, does not mean that we're, that we have to, to approve that. And also a project at the end could be an alternate, that if there is enough funds or if prices come in lower, that the only thing we're out is eighty percent of our design fee that we would have to pay.
But if we end up doing the project the following year, then we're not necessarily out the design fee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to the Facilities Committee for all of your work on this and Mr. Rostrom, Mr. Thomas. Appreciate it. Next up, we have revised policy to combine administrative policies, A nine named gifts to Jordan School District and A eleven naming of facilities. We briefly discussed these two policies in our last meeting and gave direction to the superintendent to work on some proposed changes to that policy. So, uh, Dr. Godfrey and Mr. Thomas have worked on that. We'll start with you, Dr. Godfrey.
Yes, thank you to Mr. Thomas for his work on that. He, uh, we looked at, um, inflation over time since the policy had last been updated, or the amounts in the policy had last been updated. And, uh, Mr. Thomas did the work to combine those two policies. And we think that works nicely. The board has that draft. And the amounts have been increased, um, just probably on the high end so that we don't have to keep making changes to keep up with inflation, so we kind of average tie on those changes. Mr. Thomas, anything you would add?
No, that's correct, Superintendent. There was about, the policy has been, uh, hasn't, those thresholds haven't been changed since the creation of the policy in nineteen ninety-six. So it was twenty-five years and there was just over seventy-six percent inflation over that amount of time. So we kinda had a range. Um, I could give you the, what those amounts were, the seventy-six percent increase, but then we just kinda rounded up for your consideration.
So naming a school would require a two-million dollar donation. Naming a facility such as auditorium or stadium would be five hundred thousand. And a plaque or another memorial would be the result of a fifty thousand dollar gift. And then the two are combined. There aren't really any changes except to combine the policies and increase the amounts.
The plaque concept doesn't include, um, class gifts, does it? Would that be applicable here? That if, if a class was giving a gift, does it now need to be over fifty thousand for them to put it, the class of? Or are they exempt from this?
It says the person for whom a gift.
Well, but up above it says, finance, that we're anxious to, when substantial contributions are made by an individuals or groups. I don't, however it gets interpreted, I just, I would assume that we're trying, that this wouldn't apply to them. Right? I mean, whatever they choose to give, it's gonna be from the class of X, right?
I don't see the policy as applying to school or to class gifts.
Class gifts.
Number three, the person for whom a gift is named must be a well-respecting individual. So you wouldn't have a... I see this as an individual.
Pretty wild class. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
So this is A eleven, so we would be eliminating A nine.
I, I think, I believe that's, was the intent.
A rare occurrence for us to reduce the number of policies.
Let's have less policy. I like it.
But if we're reducing the number, then shouldn't it shift?
We leave a, we leave a space for the next policy to be inserted in when we find we need that one.
I need it swept and garnished.
So thank you.
I appreciate Mr. Thomas's work on that.
Oh, no problem.
Would everyone be okay if this then goes to vote at our December board meeting? Okay. Great. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Um, boy, I'm not sure what to do with myself. We're at the end of our study session. Um, board members, would you like to have an hour dinner break? Or would you like to do a closed session right now?
About the, everybody that we need here for it.
They do have multiple closed session items tonight. Character and confidence, property and negotiations. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to go into closed session for character and competence of an individual, property and negotiations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Atwood, second by Ms. Richards, to go into closed session for character and competence of individuals, property and negotiations. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously and we will go into closed session after a five-minute break. I'll be right back.